All right, let's go. All right, everybody, welcome to tonight's July Planning Commission meeting. We've got everyone here, both physically and virtually, except for Jerry Summers. Ms. Martha and Paula Eller are on video and on the phone. Let's rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll get going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
All right, first thing is, on tonight's agenda, Seajus, are there any additions or deletions?
Uh, no additions. I added a, uh, a illustration of the de-annexation, that's the only thing.
Okay, so should be on your desk, an illustration of the de-annexation request, which is, I think items two and three, right?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next order of business is approval of the prior minutes. Commissioners, have you read the prior minutes? Uh, if so, do you have any changes? If not, I'd like a motion for approval.
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, okay, all in favor of approving the prior minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so approved. Okay, Seajus, item number one, please.
Item number one, um, correction from what's in my notes. Um, the current bond is nine hundred and fifty thousand. I've been trying to schedule an inspection to get this reduced, because he has done some work there.
Okay.
Uh, and I don't think that it would increase the six percent to the million, uh, seven there. So, if we could approve this, um, based on the deduction that we're going out tomorrow, we're doing inspection.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know the dollar amount for what that would be, but it will be a decreased amount from this million-dollar bond. Um, I'd estimate about eight hundred and fifty thousand is what it would be, uh, deducted to. So, if we could approve it at a, uh, less than, uh, the current bond, based on work done, uh, and that's, and I'm just including thinking about the light poles, the sidewalks that are out there.
Okay, current bond is nine fifty. Normally, we add, what, six percent?
Six percent, yeah, and I don't have an exact dollar amount.
Okay.
What it would decrease to.
Can we just approve it at the current amount?
We can approve it at the current.
Okay, give him the flexibility to.
Yeah.
Okay, so Commissioners, um, item number one, the request is to extend the subdivision improvement bond to nine hundred and fifty thousand, three thirty-eight. Any discussion, or if not, is there a motion on item number one?
I make a motion that we approve, uh, item number one, as the number's given.
All righty, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Uh, any opposed? Okay, no opposed, so item number one is approved. Uh, item two?
Item two and three will, uh, pretty much run concurrently there. Uh, de-annexation, uh, just, uh, turn north on Highway thirty-one W. Both property owners, um, are requested to de-annex. So, we're, no sewer available, uh, at the current site. Um, and this wouldn't be what's known as a donut hole around our city. It would just move the property line to the center line of the road. So, I recommend it approval.
Okay, hate to see y'all go, but understand the request. Any discussion, Commissioners, about items two and three? No, if not, can we have a motion?
Motion approved.
Two and three together?
Yes, two and three together.
So, motion on the tables to approve two and three together? Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, items.
I mean, I know the Robert County will have to be notified. My person will have to go to our Board Mayor, all them in an ordinance form.
Okay.
But generally, they, they, they really, up on any, on any old road, they may not allow the de-annex. But this being a state route, it's one of those, you all know, they have no problem.
Okay.
So, for certain, or service, if, if they have a fire or something like that, we're just doing it like that.
I think we, uh, well, mutual aid, if we all, obviously, we would.
Would there be a charge or anything like that?
Uh, just, uh, there's no charge, we, we have not charged other entities for mutual aid.
Wouldn't they be covered by the volunteer fire station up there anyways?
They would be.
All right, on to number four, which was deferred from the June meeting. Seajus?
Number four, um, Mr. Ely, here to say that this is that property behind Kroger. Uh, uh, thank you, coming in any minute now, but, uh, he's in the conference room.
Oh, okay, been sequestered.
Yeah.
They went to go get him, right? Didn't they go get him?
Brent Ely, Brent Ely?
Beijing, Brent Ely?
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
I just got up and walked this way while y'all were still talking, 'cause I don't mind my missing.
Nope, you're, you're in good shape. Yeah, please, I can't hear you.
Um, start?
Yeah, so, item number four, we looked at it, um, last month, we had a few questions. Um, I think we were worried that if we changed this zoning to C one R, and you guys dropped out as one concern, that all of a sudden, we might have some massive apartment, or, uh, planning conflicts there that we didn't really want.
We understood that, and, and it really took that to heart, because after hearing everyone collectively had the same concerns, I think it made a lot of sense. Um, straight zoning's not something we're really, we really do that often anymore. We're usually doing PUDs or some, some form or fashion, SPs in Metro, whatever you may call it. We found an avenue that we think satisfies everyone, um, well, and that is the same scenario that we had just done on a subdivision in Jolton. And essentially, what we're doing is we are straight zoning the property as requested, requesting the district rezone the property as requested, with a deed restriction applied. So, we drafted, well, we backed up. We spent a lot of effort over the past thirty days to land plan this property and try to figure out good use for it. Something that works well for the surrounding properties, works well with the park around it, uh, walking distance. We produced a land plan, and then from there, fashioned, our attorney fashioned, uh, deed restrictions that basically, for lack of better words, say this. So, the reason filing the deed re, reason that we, uh, and I, well, you know, I was over with that last month, is because I wasn't sure the legality of that, and then finally, our attorney educated us that it's something that, that we have to voluntarily do. It's not something that a city can force upon a property owner. But we're here today saying we want to voluntarily do that with the rezoning of this property. So, um, we've shared those deed restrictions, uh, with the city administrator, we've shared those with the city attorney. A blessing on those from the city attorney, with the understanding that there's a few, oh, excuse me, uh, with a few little things we've still got to correct, I think.
Yeah.
But they seem minor, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, and I think that, you know, just looking at what you've got in the patch, I think, you know, talking to Seajus and talking to Jerry, you know, if we kind of, or where we, uh, I mean, I think what we would like to see is if we could say that it's a contingent on the property, how we would attach the site plan. Does that work?
That's fine, yeah, I understand that's probably more defined.
Right, yeah.
Than what we've got, so, yeah, that'd be, that'd be totally fine.
Okay.
Um, so beyond that, deed, uh, property density, the, the restrict that. Some new infrastructure put in, a road leading out to the back through the park property will be built, uh, with this development, with, um, that road in terms of some existing facilities to this court. I think there's a bath, is there a bathhouse right there?
Yeah, just, just the testing board, the bathroom off court, and also the side, I just couldn't hear a fat.
So, we've got to redo all that, we've got to rebuild this court, we've got to rebuild parking lots, so forth, but, um, it, it, it will, it will end up being good for the development and good for the area and the city as a whole, when having that road.
Okay.
And then, of course, there's park tie-ins, and we, let's see, restrictions don't get into as many details as, as we plan to do, but we've got, now that, now that you guys sent us to the drawing board and started really having to land the project, say, we've gotten really excited about it, so we see a lot of, a lot of opportunity here.
Yeah, with the Byram Drive, did you sort of look at the Kroger plans and, with the, if you're going to shift that road over?
It is.
Your, your plans is.
We fully expect to have to modify that area right there, depending on what, where Kroger is at that point.
Yeah, they're, they're probably, they're expected, hopefully, start sometime this fall, September is what they're, he was telling me for a while soon.
Right.
He called us today about it, moving forward with their project, but I, we, we have the plans, we know where the road's going to go.
Right.
If you don't have it, I'm sure Seajus can probably use it.
I've got those, yeah, I've got those, and we, we, we've expected people have to, with them.
Yeah, just be mindful, just, uh, but.
Okay.
I don't have anything else to add, and happy to answer questions if there is any.
The house is on loan, uh, we don't know the density of the buffer, so if you can give us something in writing on how, how much buffer you're going to give us?
We can, uh, we just, just, uh, he, he, uh, just talked about that this morning, and essentially, what I'll have to do is I'll, I'll, because of the zone change between us and the houses on loan, it'll be set forth already by the zoning ordinance, that I'll have to provide the largest property that the city has mandated by zoning ordinance.
The Seajus said it can be fifty feet, uh?
Fifty feet, um, in the deed buffer, the deed buffers.
Okay, it's already there, but the forest is there.
Yeah, right, and we just can't, you know, we can set for fifty feet, a hundred feet, and leave some there. You understand that, so those, those neighbors don't have to, I mean, it hangs there for years. Right, right, yeah, we, we recognize that, and to make sure that we follow, that, that along with a lot of the zoning ordinance criteria, we'll make sure that we check those boxes when the site plan comes through.
Okay, I mean, it looks like a, it's like a nice compromise, honestly.
Then in the, in the deed restriction?
About the buffer?
Because we changed the zoning.
Well, if the buffer is going to have the, it's, that will be shown on the site plan, then I don't think we need to.
Yeah, and it's in the ordinance.
Uh, I'm looking right now at the C one, it's pretty much, um, landscape requirement, where transitional buffer yard requires a buffer seating ten feet, solid center wall, city, city requirement that's to be built, but, or with a solid under stories, I'd do data screen. I don't really see anything but thirty foot in here, so, just see ten feet.
So, if we can increase that and put it in the, uh, deed restriction, fifty foot buffer, something like that, would be great.
Okay, and then the road, the roadway will provide that connectivity, I think we've been looking for, to help connect the park to, uh, the red light there at Byram Drive, help expedite people leaving the park a little more safely. And we had, had wondered about maybe in the future if really the, that Byram Drive extension would run along the, I guess it'd be the south portion, maybe, of the stadium or something like that, I don't know, as opposed to, as, you know, to give another potential exit.
You're talking the shift of, of what's showing now?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Show the extension somewhere else?
Yeah.
I think that would, yeah, well, the, from the Kroger plan, it does get shifted more to the.
East.
East, but it is not all the way to the property line.
Right.
We, we went through a lot of options with them, uh, that was Kroger and considering this same property, and how we essentially need to make this connection in the by, uh, property line. It still leaves room for the mouth development on the east side of Byram, even after the Kroger.
Okay.
Uh, the one thing I'll tell you is, is this alignment's pretty close, but instead of how it, Kroger, uh, take, arc to the east, that would probably, that's a shaped curve. It comes through there.
Got it, okay.
We'll have a better alignment to, to continue this.
All right, uh, Ms. Eller, Ms. Wilkerson, y'all have any questions? Any questions from y'all?
No, I'm doing. The one statement, you know, and I'm sure if you're aware, that he would adhere to the commercial design standards. Mr. Clark, have you gone over those with him, or given him a copy of those?
Yeah, I'm giving him the commercial design standards, subdivision rates, and everything else.
Good, thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any further discussion on this one?
We are going to get our fifty feet of buffer.
I put that on my note, sir, that they're here or in the site plan.
Once it, once it passes this, we, we go back to his, you know, normal zoning, and we're back to ten feet.
Yeah, I, I can, I can tell you if it's not already required, we're happy to write it in, up the deed restrictions, so let me sure, I just want those neighbors to keep there, should understand that, keep their buffer.
Okay, are we ready to make a motion on this item? That there's no further questions? Paula, Ms. Wilkerson, anything else?
No.
Would you like to make a motion? Okay.
I understand, I'm good.
All right, looking for a motion on item number four, please, number four.
I make a motion that we approve item number four as requested.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion is approved, thank you very much for working on that. All right, number five, sir?
Number five is the White House Community Center, also going to be known as City Hall, uh, just down the hill near the playground. Staff have looked at, uh, site plan, uh, did not see anything that stood out, and I recommend.
All right.
I think Josh should be on the call, I don't know, I didn't see him.
Yes, sir, I'm here. All right, Commissioners, any questions about the new and improved City Hall?
How fast can we get it?
Well, it's going to go out to bid July twenty-second, uh, hopefully have the bids opened up, maybe just before the August, or maybe, maybe, uh, maybe had approved, and maybe under construction sometime, uh, October, November.
Wow. What we're open to? What we're going to do with this?
We're going to pull the plug and let it go.
Just let it go down the drain? Okay. Okay, any other comments or questions about number five? No? Y'all online, any questions?
No, no questions.
If not? If not, can we make a motion on number five?
I'm approving.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving number five? Any opposed? All right, number five's approved, going to be awesome. Thank you, guys. Yeah, hey, thanks a bunch. Okay, number six?
Number six, I will be abstaining.
Bob abstains from number six.
I will also.
Paula also abstains from number six.
All right, I'll get up and explain this one.
Okay.
Uh, the farmstead owned Tyree Springs, uh, is going to encompass both the east and west side of Tyree Springs, between the Meadows and Palmer Chapel.
Okay.
Um, the right side will be seventy-five foot lot width, uh, NCRPUD. The left side of, the east side, well, west side of Tyree will be, uh, contain different mix of, uh, homes. Uh, there'll be some cottage-style homes, uh, there'll be some fifty-one foot lot widths, and some, uh, it's going to be a mix, as your site plan shows. Uh, and that, that request was for the NCRPUD, everything is, they have three units an acre, which, um, it fits the landscape of this town, um, I say town center area, but it's just on the backside of town center. Uh, they're offering, uh, we recommended some, uh, off-site improvements, including a sidewalk to run on the west side of Tyree Springs, uh, to connect with the, uh, approved Lennar property. Uh, these two subdivisions will connect, uh, well, I said one subdivision, but the west side, the east side, uh, will connect through a walkway across Tyree Springs. Uh, the developers are here to answer any questions.
Yeah, well, y'all, y'all come up if you don't mind, and tell us your names again, sorry. Uh, doesn't matter, wherever you're coming.
Uh, I'm Toby Dumont with State Harbor Development.
All right, nice to meet you. Okay, so, NCRPUD. I'm going to start off with the last thing that Seajus mentioned, how, how would you plan to, uh, connect the two neighborhoods across the road?
So, the idea is to use a similar walkways you guys have, remember about high school, Greenwood?
Uh-huh.
Um, it'll have a light up, you push a button, it'll light, flash, somebody will walk through, and if someone walks through, it won't be flashing. Very similar, but maybe quarter of a mile from this, from this foundation.
Want to build a tunnel?
I did ask them that.
They built the tunnel in Brentwood.
I did.
I think you say it's one in Brentwood.
And a bridge, I also, I haven't mentioned the bridge, but, it will be shorted.
Huh?
It's going to get shorted.
Yeah, I know.
One or money.
All right, Commissioners, what other questions do we have on this one? Number of homes again, uh, four something?
Four thirty-nine.
Four thirty-nine total. Uh, traffic study, complete or incomplete? What's the result, Jason, what's the?
We, we received, I don't know, maybe a week ago or something, I think it's fairly thorough. There are a couple of things that I have not submitted them formally back in a response. We've talked about it, but I haven't given it to them, so they can forward it to their traffic engineer, but, um, want to add just a little bit more clarity, a little bit more analysis, um, to, to get better feedback.
Right.
But the way I look at that is, is just based upon what's been submitted so far, I don't think it changed any, it will change anything in the perspective, I don't think, from the way you all view it tonight. It would just, it shows right now that it's doable on the state highway. It probably could change some of the details and the requirements as far as what they may have to do, um, at the intersection of, of their project, and how it affects, uh, the state route.
Okay.
So, it could change that just a little bit, probably not aligned, and maybe not at all from what they've got right now.
How do you link them together when you've got one proposal a little further south of, what, eighty-something odd homes? Which kind of lines up with the interest to South Palmer's, right? And then this one up the street, how do you, how do you merge all that information together to become a, a more comprehensive?
Well.
Traffic plan?
It would be nice if, um, if it was the same engineer, but, but the way you do it regardless is, is provide whoever's coming second in that analysis, the, the information that was done on the first subdivision, and incorporate both of those, but, uh, sort of catch twenty-two, which one would, which subdivision would come first?
Right.
In the same question, which study gets done first to analyze, um, the effects of, true effects of their project, but.
You would.
Only you don't do that, but in this scenario, I, I think we will get that. Um, we, we discussed that at the meeting as well last week, but, uh, it hasn't been carried forward and, and actually done. Now, one thing, the study is done on this one, it has not been done yet on the other, on the other subdivision.
Okay, you would think there'd have to be some signalization there at the school.
Um, maybe.
With all this volume?
What, um, the traffic study, um, implied was that it may be warranted for a traffic signal at South Palmer's, um, in the near future, if there are increased volumes. And that's sort of the thing that I keep in, I'm just, well, how much traffic volume are we talking about that would trigger that? The one thing I know is, is highly likely that you're only going to catch an hour worth of warrant, um, in that traffic study. So, um, that would say that we have, it's warranted under the first check, which is a peak one hour. City leadership would still have some thought to put in that, and, and say, well, do we want a traffic signal if it's only one hour out of twenty-four, um, that it passes that test, so.
Yeah, but if you're trying to drive in that one-hour time period, it's, you'd want it.
Well, Jason, the biggest thing I see that would affect the traffic in this, and the, the majority of the subdivision, is if we, like our comprehension plan, we tie it to Cedar Brook. Tyree, and then it back through Cedar Brook to thirty-one, and eventually, we've got drawings taking us all around, um, say, through the, the Union Road, which you have, that's, that's completely, that loop that we keep talking about.
Well, that's right, and we, we provided those comments, um, already to them, in that the, the plan that they have now will accommodate doing that. There's one very small sliver of a tri- object property that you can't make that connection, but, uh, this, this subdivision, as presented, will accommodate that and provide the right ways internally, uh, to allow that to happen.
The road would be a collector road, that main one going straight through to Cedar Brook, I would hope, that we'd have to meet the width requirement for that collector road.
That's what, is it going to be large enough for that future?
Uh, going.
If that doesn't come?
And going to your question, I, I, you know, would be really, would benefit all of us, the city and the developer, if we can get that road connection there. They have to find a way to work with the property owner and all of that little segment of land to get that, to make that happen.
Can we not do that? Is there, is there a stumbling block or something right there, we can't, how many feet is that? That's just a very narrow.
Are you talking about the sidewalk?
No, I'm talking about Cedar Brook.
Cedar Brook connector.
Where you go straight out to thirty-one.
To the western edge of your property.
He's asking about your road, eh, to the farm west.
I mean, you've got a little piece right there, you could tie straight into another road, and.
Hey, I'm Sean Winter with the engineering, I'm just representing, yeah, they're talking, uh, understanding that they, they worked with that property owner, trying to obtain that property, and they're going to come to an agreement.
All right.
We approve this drawing, it's, it's wrong. Either, look, either, you're going to have to do it, the city's going to have to do it, eventually. Let's rather see you guys do it, than the city have to do it.
I mean, uh, I guess it's a matter of, I think they're, they're paying that, that, uh, whatever.
At this point, you have no way of, if once you're proven drawing, we. How many feet is it? I don't know, it's like, two lots?
Yeah, probably about two, uh, hundred. We're happy to build the road, we just weren't able to buy the property.
If I, if you're between now and a final master development plan, if you can, if you can continue to, to let the property owner see for the way to, to protect it, or, 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 or.
Good, I would say, I would say y'all don't have anything to do with this, it's probably real estate or something like that, right? But they're everywhere.
You got to have to get past the street.
Yeah, we have no, yeah.
The chances are.
Four hundred houses, eight hundred cars.
Yeah.
Minimum.
Ms. Martha, Ms. Eller, any questions from y'all?
No.
No.
Well.
We already talked about the sidewalk connection, the Lennars subdivision, already with them, yeah.
Okay, and so, what, uh, what driveway length are we using on these, the thirty?
Thirty-five, they give the thirty-five foot setbacks.
Thirty-five?
And, uh, I will, um, there was a question, there's a, a stub near where Summerlin, if you look, uh, I was asked a question by Commissioner, um, if you look where Summerlin, their, their cul-de-sac, that will be part of this subdivision and not the Summerlin subdivision, because Summerlin's already approved, so this would be, uh, about, I think, six lots, um, four to six lots, that will be part of, of, of Summerlin.
Okay.
It is going to be part of Summerlin.
I mean, I'm sorry, this subdivision.
We just showed us the road extending into the next property, but they, they see the, the idea of putting that, you know, an ending to that, to that road right there.
Well, who's on, whose homeowner association is going to be? Well, who's on, whose homeowner association's gonna be involved in there would be this one or Summerlin?
This subdivision.
This subdivision, for six thousand?
I, I guess personally speaking, I've got a little bit of heartache with, uh, the specifics of the traffic plan and the connectivity with Cedar Brook. And, uh, that's just my opinion so far. Know about y'all, Richard or Cliff?
If we're trying to follow the.
Cedar Brook connection is very important as far as, like you said, we've made improvements to Sage and McCurdy at thirty-one W now. We've got plans to put those extended right turn lanes, uh, on, on McCurdy, which is the extension of Cedar Brook.
Mm-hmm.
And then on the Sage roadside, we're making those enhancements to handle this type of traffic. And a lot of these folks, when they're gonna go to the Prover or the Walmart, because I'm neat.
That's the way.
It's, that's the way they're gonna go most likely.
So, right now, we'd be going, taking a left and going up to Conne Street.
Raymond Hirsch.
Raymond Hirsch.
Yeah.
One of the two.
But, so how much, and I haven't driven down Cedar Brook in a while, but, I mean, is Cedar Brook as it exists today really set up to become a connector road?
It was, it's a wider road, uh, in the subdivision, it's got wide shoulders and, uh, the house is set back a little bit further, so it was designed for that purpose.
Okay.
This, this has been, that's been on the master plan for a long time.
Okay.
Trying to go through there. And the only other thing I saw was like setbacks, buffer like us, the other developers, the buffer, you're tight in some of these areas. And we're asking for like fifty feet of buffer around the developer. If you look at where in Lot seventy-nine and Lot thirty-two.
At the northwestern edge, uh, there's, uh, there's a small sliver, um.
Yeah. Round the corner side, yeah.
Dave, I know I think I already answered this, but can you, can you explore, Dave, that's in the, uh, can you explore the idea of a four-way stop at South Palmer's with the Nar subdivision? Um, you know, and, I mean, I know that you mentioned that we'd only have about an hour, the morning, an hour in the afternoon is where we have a problem with the biggest part of traffic, but having a stopping system in there would be definitely calming.
Well, that's part of the stuff, yes, so we're going to ask her to add some more analysis on that intersection.
Okay.
Regardless of whether it's signalized or some other, at least show us the stop control analysis that you did. And it may say, that's not warranted, but.
Right.
The, the hardest part, which I know we'll, we'll figure out some reasonable method, is getting the traffic on that South Palmer's side right now, given the odd situation we're in, um, and getting good school and business traffic counts.
Right, I, I'm just concerned that, you know, the road is, 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 you know, you have a lot of wide shoulders on it and all this drop-off. And you're talking about, you know, we already have speeding problems along that route anyways, to slow traffic down. I know it's an inconvenience, but it does help between that lot, between high school and the elementary school. Try to bring some calming to it, I think the south side with lights around the, the south side. And then reflect the strip sound poles.
I spoke with, uh, one of the school board planners, and he would, uh, said he'd get back with me and give some type of school sign. Or, they don't typically do that in schools out on that, uh, main road. But he did say that, uh, he'd work with us, and, uh, I don't know to what extent, but, uh, he did say that he would help.
Okay.
And, and with this, uh, this.
That would take big legislation, because it's, it, there's some exemptions that, that, I mean, remember we passed a resolution to support.
Mission.
Kind of, right. And we have to get exemption, like some of the other cities have in the state, so it would take an act of Congress.
So, so whatever, uh, what Jason's saying about the traffic study and, uh, the additional work needs to be done, this is the preliminary phase, and so, any, any further, we still have the final, uh, master development plan. So this isn't the last stop.
That's true. Alright, so then, things that we're concerned about is, uh, the impact of this on South Palmer's, I believe, that, that intersection. Connectivity through to Cedar Brook. You know, some, uh, maybe some concern that the, uh, connectivity from the east side over to the west side community center is, you know, safe for everyone to use. And then, I note down here in the bottom of the drawing on the west side and the lots that are two eighty something through about three fourteen, all that whole area just seems like it, it just doesn't have, there's no, like incremental parking or anything. It doesn't appear to be, down here in the bottom of the map, on the left side. I mean, I know, yeah, we, we've increased the driveway lengths and all that, but as Richard mentioned, you drive through some of the, even some of the, what we consider to be nicer developments down towards Indian Lake, um, what's it called in there, the?
Dern Farm.
Yeah, right, you know, there's just a lot of.
A lot of traffic.
There's a lot of cars.
Street parking is, I mean, you go down there right now, and it's, streets are lined with cars. As it's starting to fill up, and that's, as this fills up, that's, that's gonna happen here. So, and our road's only twenty-two foot wide, so. Yeah, that's, I think that needs to be taken consideration.
So, uh.
Floor parking lot.
Yeah, it's floor parking situations where there's all street parking, um.
Well, if anybody visits these people, they got parking straight.
Yeah.
So, I mean, any words you can do on it?
Tell them we have a two-car garage. Two-car garages, you're gonna have thirty-five foot setbacks, we need to find room in the grass in the driveways, uh, for some cars. Uh, I mean, one way to solve some of our traffic concerns, uh, with parking vehicles on the roadway is, is, is this DHOA would require, you know, parking only on one side of the street, that's always unofficial for our fire trucks to try to get down through the road, moving vehicles, moving vans, that's, I guess, then. But, that's up to them, if they wanna do that, we don't, absolutely don't require that in our work.
Okay. Alright, Commissioners, what do you think? Again, it is a preliminary plan. But we did have some concerns, mostly with, uh, traffic and parking and whatnot. The recommendation by staff is for approval. We can make our decision as, as we like. Any further comments from Cliff, Richard, Ms. Martha?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
I just wanna see that board right there fill the street to match up with our comprehension plan.
Yeah.
I mean, so we had, and built Cedar Brook for future, going through.
Right.
It needs to be that way.
Right. Okay.
Like Mr. Cox said, we will, we will visit this again, and my understanding is, this is just for the rezoning, to send it to the, uh, Lord, uh, Mayor and Alderman for the request to rezon, and that we will visit this again. So, I may send it to them with a positive recommendation.
Okay, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Alright. There's a motion to approve for Ms. Wilkinson, is there a second?
Does that subject any stipulations, or is that a?
Did you have any stipulations attached to your motion for approval, Martha?
I recommend, no, I am, because we will look at this again, this is only for rezoning. Any kind of site plan to make, all this has gotta come back. My understanding is, this goes to them to rezon, and we will, we will be looking at plans later about some of these other comments, I think that we would address it.
You're correct, your timeline's correct. Okay.
We're just making sure that you take good notes and that you work with them when they start submitting, you know, they.
For final.
Final, or make a lot of good notes with, with what their concerns are, and then we'll try to get answers on traffic and.
I think we'll add that, yeah, to, to their traffic analysis as well, which will benefit the effects that we're already seeing on it.
Right.
I agree.
Sure.
We'll add that as well.
Cause you have, you have to do something Tyree's frame in front of the development, wherever that little piece right there. It's gonna be a lot cheaper than doing a lot of work on Tyree's.
Alright, so there is a motion on the table for approval with no stipulations attached to it. Is there a second? I'm, uh, three of us that are left. Is there a second to Ms. Martha's motion? What do you think, Richard?
Just for clarification, though.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you know, Ms. Martha said that we're passing, uh, rezoning, but I do have notes, uh, tied to, uh, to what we're just, just wanted, just for clarification, uh, the developer, once it's passed, the developer will address, address notes, uh, between now and when they come back from the final.
Yeah, I think that's our, that's our expectation, sure. That if, if we approve it in its current form, that you'll come back with, um, items to address the concerns that Sege just has made out of. But Ms., but Martha didn't attach any, um, stipulations to what she.
I just wanna make sure we get enough red buffer to buffer the regional property owners and Cedar Brook taken care of. Cause if we can't get Cedar Brook in that taken care of, I wouldn't approve the zoning.
I think if that's what you got going, then I think Martha should revise her motion, or somebody should put that down and submit a new motion.
Okay, you don't think the notes are sufficient?
Well, I think she just didn't say that, she's gonna approve it.
Yeah.
Without that.
Need to put the stipulations in.
Alright, so, Ms. Martha made a motion for approval with no stipulations, that motion's on the table. Council recommends.
I mean, the way I'm looking at this, we're all considering Sege's remarks as being part of my motion. In other words, I'm not listing off, he's made all these comments, and that's kinda understood as far as I'm concerned, that I don't need to reiterate or go over what he said. What he has said in his, this request stands as part of my motion. But my motion is to send it to them to rezon, and then once it comes back to us, that, this is not in stone what we're looking at tonight. It's what y'all are looking at, that this plan can have changes to it. But I'm, I'm making my motion with the comments that Sege's made, that's part of my motion, I need to say that.
Including half stipulations.
Yes.
Alright, so Ms. Martha's revised her, her motion for approval, who have a second?
Let me say this again, I think anytime we make any kind of motion on any item, that we're making our motion with understanding that they adhere to the comments that Sege's made. I think that's self-understood, it might be, or self-explanatory.
That is.
Just tell them there are gonna be any questions?
No.
I agree, that's the common sentiment, but like Valerie said, we really wanna make sure we're.
I don't, I don't wanna end up with something that we've got on the master plan for a thoroughfare and have a hole in it.
Yeah.
And then I think that'll, that'll add traffic over to, uh, Cedar Brook, but it's gonna take a ton of traffic off of Tyree.
Alright, well, our opportunity to either approve her motion or reject it is here, or amend it.
Cause I didn't think, Sege's is not written stone, I thought that started discussion back and forth. Also, I'll have something nailed down, so.
Well, I think that what, what she's saying is those things have to be addressed. I mean, I don't think it's necessarily one way or the other, but somehow those things have to be resolved.
Yes, I think that's what she's saying. Alright, is there a second for Ms. Martha's motion? Would we like to vote it down? I'll second Ms. Martha's motion. Says a second, it's me, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we have, okay, all ayes and two abstentions.
Yes.
Okay. Number, where were we? Nine, eight?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Alright, number seven, uh, this was brought before us, uh, back in, I think, June, December. Uh, this is sort of two parcels running concurrently, uh, one on, uh, Highway thirty-one W, the other on Raymond Hirsch. Uh, developers requesting a rezoning, uh, which is currently a commercial zone, C one. Uh, he's requesting it to be, uh, PUD to put twenty-two townhouses on the Raymond Hirsch, uh, property. And, uh, commercial on the, uh, Highway thirty-one W, which the last time they came before us, we requested that they, um, add some commercial, you want, you want to see some commercials.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Landry, uh, Mr. Wilson here speaks to that.
Come on in. How are you?
Good, sir, how you doing?
Tired.
Amen to that.
Alright, tell us what you got going on here, if you don't mind.
Um, what we came back to you with is, uh, on the serving of this tribe to put some commercial, um, property there, um, which can possibly bring a restaurant or two into that location there, uh, via drive-through location here. And, um, I can't answer that.
Drink some beer.
So, uh, now I can, that's, uh, do we know any?
Don't spill the beans.
We've got, we've got one tenant, we're talking to the second one.
Okay.
I know one could possibly have that.
Alright.
So, um.
So, we're not gonna do, we're not asking for mixed use anymore, we're just gonna stay commercial with that lot?
Originally, the property was owned, that whole parcel was PUD, if you remember, and we changed that to commercial.
So, one on thirty-one, yeah.
Thirty-one is commercial, right?
I think Tim was telling us to rebuild, it's all for the effect of, all of that building he's had, so he's familiar with this concept and what, what's happening.
Okay.
If he's to fit on the property.
Yes. Uh, we will have to change an interest to thirty-one, and they have a slight issue with our financing from our, uh, PUD property there that, uh, they may not, uh, we're working with them to get that done, but it may have to, talking to TY, they may have to have a, 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 thirty-one, go to those tenants.
Okay.
And this sidewalk is gonna connect, uh, for the.
It is, it is, and we, we're closing in on the project now, and we can talk to Jerry about if we could lay and put it in right now. Trying to do that at one time, and put, put the, the chain back out and put the new one back in.
Alright, Commissioners, any questions, Ms. Martha, Paula?
I have a question, how did he determine, or they determine, uh, how much storage unit they would have? Storage building, um.
Well, I, I.
Storage, how was that determined?
Uh, I think you're one ahead of us, we're on number seven.
That's the next, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Save it.
I'll forget it, but I was looking at, uh, the storage building, why I said it.
Well, any questions about number seven, while we got you?
Have a, a bigger interest in what you're showing on your drawing off of thirty-one?
No, sir, that existing interest is for the tenants of the apartment complex, whereas the new structure will have to have its own.
I just see the one you got drawn up to the other end of the lot.
Yes, sir, that's what I.
That's what I'm talking about, okay, I just, uh. I just, uh, and you're not gonna, you're not gonna, uh, tie it into your interest to the apartments at all?
We need the apartment.
Uh?
We need the apartment.
Okay, okay.
If, if, if we're looking at middle apartment in the borough...
Okay.
If we cut that into the, the council's about four or five.
Four or five, okay. Yes, okay.
All right, any more questions about number seven? If not, I'd like a motion on number seven, please.
See, because they're gonna be all, all our commercial design standards...
Yes, yes.
More tied into each thing they got built.
We talked about also the entrance on, uh, from Raymond Hirsch, uh, into, uh, I guess this would be the number seven, uh, we talked about that median being cut.
We're on number...
On the number seven, yeah.
We're on seven.
Number seven?
Yeah. I'm going back to what Martha's doing. I thought we were going on the commercial dom and the commercial line on thirty-one W, that's what we, we...
This was number, this is number seven, right?
I thought I was looking at...
That's eight. That's eight.
Come on, y'all.
Eight.
All right. What number is this?
You're right.
This is seven.
Can we come to item number eight, go back to seven?
Maybe.
Item number eight?
All right.
That's what you were talking about?
Right?
Commercial building?
Yes.
Right there, but... Thirty-one, that's...
Okay.
Which is a great asset, cause last time they came with the apartment for that lot, we said no. And, uh, they, you said, at least have to be apartments with me, so...
Okay, this is...
They're gonna go all for my...
I don't know which one you have on, but I'm on number seven.
Which one is this? Seven. Eight.
Okay. So, Paula?
Eight.
Yeah.
This is eight. Put a big number eight on it, eight.
All right.
This was seven. It's got some houses and some other rectangular things on there.
You wanna go ahead and do eight, since we've been talking about eight?
Yeah, let's do eight.
Although Martha was right. Why hate to say that?
I know.
I'm trying to get through, see? I'm trying to hear this project along.
She been saying that to me.
Your question on number eight was, how did he come up with the number of storage units, right?
That's right. How did determine those, that, that that would be adequate or what he needed. I'm not really questioning that's not what he needs, I'm just asking the question, how did he determine?
We just, we, we have such a demand for space there for storage on site, and we've got some open space there, and unless you get, you know, three days, we can have a garage just, we, we, we try and fill it up on the garage, just like that. Right, yeah, we filled up on the garages and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So, that, that's just a, like a walk-up.
Yep. We were, we were, we were saying with A, we're on eight.
We're on eight.
Which is a commercial building only. How about eight?
I think the contract is good. I mean, I, I wasn't questioning that wasn't sufficient. I think, I think it's good that he have that.
Yeah. So, Martha, I don't think she was right. I think she was wrong again. Yeah.
You go have her, she'll go puke.
What are we looking at if we're not looking at those storage buildings?
I gotta, I...
We're standing order of the agenda to be on seven.
I know.
Now, I didn't mention these two as being, kind of running concurrent, uh, with, uh, seven is, uh, uh, the town, uh, the townhouses. Uh, it says mixed use on here, but, uh, this would be...
Mixed use, I'm like...
This would just be a, a pud, request to go from commercial to the pud, uh...
So, we're gonna put, we're gonna put this on Seajus for putting around...
Yeah, I'm setting the heat.
Okay, last time you picked your one on number seven.
Are we looking at ten A or ten B? Cause it says White House Village on both of them, Townhouses on both of them. We have Concept ten A and Concept ten B, so what are we looking at?
Ten B?
Ten B.
Ten B goes for seven.
Ten B has the storage buildings on it.
Yes.
They have storage. Or, or mine does.
Right. Yeah, all we're specifically speaking of guys is not this up here she's asked about, it's just these three. This is on our existing parcel.
Yeah.
Just so you understand that.
It's just these three buildings.
So, we're basically incorporating this section into the pud that we currently have, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And you're asking for the storage unit up there, right?
No, no.
Is that what you're gonna approve?
These out here are townhouses with garages that are, the townhouses with garages, these all two buildings are just townhouses, no garage.
Okay.
Which is the same thing that's already built over there, that we've already built there.
And that's item number seven.
Yes.
Ten B equals number seven.
But the storage...
Okay.
Ooh.
Quit.
Ten C is what?
You can't say, I couldn't see if it could see right. Back in, you can't say gender where it's...
Ten C, seven.
Okay, the, the storage unit. Yeah. There'll be a...
Ten C.
Why, why don't have a ten C?
Yeah, what's ten C?
A ten C there, when you're asking for no townhouses.
That's what's telling us.
When, uh, when we were initially, we initially had this on the agenda for discussion, uh, and I, uh, I, I probably inadvertently put that in or had already put that in, but, uh, we had several different plans of phases, and then we came to the conclusion that at the last minute, we could get this in, we had everything we needed.
Throw it away.
Is this so cold, is this like...
Yes.
Is that the end of it?
Yes, yep, yes.
The bank's right here.
Uh-huh. No ten C away.
Ten C's no good.
Get rid of it.
Both of them still show Raymond Hirsch.
Yeah, both of them still show Raymond Hirsch. That's why, that was the reason I broke it up.
There's no, okay, we, we got that. So, we're not doing ten C.
Take ten C and throw it away.
There goes ten C.
Get rid of it. Now, let's go back to number seven.
Okay.
Let's, let's go back, let's go back to number seven.
In our package.
Ten B.
Ten B.
Anybody got a problem with ten B?
No, we're, actually, they, they're predicting ten B.
I'm gonna cry.
Their drawing has no connection to Raymond Hirsch.
Correct.
Is that right?
We haven't seen that one yet. We haven't seen real houses. Which one do you got?
This may be one video, I'll go back and watch.
You have ten B, ten B. They directly received, they took...
That's ten B.
All right. The thing of you.
There's no connection to Raymond Hirsch.
Okay.
It's coming out, just adding them to what they, this is the guy, we're right here and chomping this up.
And that's the reason I brought that up, is that, uh, so I purposely called it ecstasy.
Way to go.
That's, that's successful.
You're having a good time.
Yeah.
Officer Brady, any comments?
I don't feel we need to call my old, my waist, my waist.
All right. All right, let's go back to number seven and do something here. I gotta go to work tomorrow. Number seven, which is ten B. Bad gummit.
It's, uh, Seajus, the townhomes we're gonna do over here, are we gonna stay with their, uh, original building that they're doing, or is it supposed to the highway, or gonna do something different?
It's gonna be, the elevations are, should be in your plans as well. It'll be similar to what's on the, uh...
No, no, any elevation on...
Any elevation. The building looks like what's existed on, or what's in the... Originally, that the townhouses with the garages, the townhouses...
That doesn't really do it.
Like a finished house.
Look here, I mean, just go to it, like the front, looking towards Raymond Hirsch, that's gonna be the front.
Right now, it can only come out.
Right, it's gonna be the backside in the parking lot.
And then the outside, that looks more like a residential front, so you can put the garage on Raymond Hirsch to get that front. The others up there, they're townhouses, but they look more like duplexes, so they're more in the inside, that you can't see those facade, so we put a really nice facade out on Raymond Hirsch.
Okay, so what I'm asking for is if we're gonna see anything, we're gonna, we're gonna buffer it like we've asked on the other side, I think we should buffer it.
Martha, Paula, Valerie's hold, Valerie's holding up the correct plan.
Okay, okay, good.
The buffer that was behind the...
Tell her when she can put it down, please.
The original plan...
She's getting tired.
I, I say, thank you, Valerie. Thank you.
She's, you're good.
And we're gonna move it to the outside. So, the trees we've seen on the, this is drawn, which was between the two lots, we would flip it over to the outside.
To the outside.
To the right, to the right, so that we get that same buffer. Trees planted along. Trees and shrubs.
We just drive down there with some spray paint?
What?
Nothing, nothing.
I was there today.
Did you spray paint it out so it...
You know my pictures?
You could, could you?
I've got, I've got pictures of everything, if I can find my phone.
I'm just kidding.
So, is that gonna be our thicker buffer like we asked for the other side?
Well, this isn't, between the thicker buffer would be from commercial to residential. I have to look at the NCR, PUD.
This was, this, Richie was gonna be commercial, and now we're backing out, but in the middle of townhouses.
So, it would have to be, uh, from pud to the, like the bank, between the bank and...
That wouldn't have to be a...
Yeah.
And then down Raymond Hirsch.
Yes, between the apartments, between the apartments on the other side, uh, there will be a buffer on the backside on, uh, thirty-one W and the apartments.
So, you know, before we had, uh, commercial, and then you're gonna be behind, and so that's kind of a different, different thing, but, yeah, you'll do this, and you, and you basically make it its own compound with a lot of trees and that kind of thing, eventually all you see is the entrance. Cause you know, that's what we get all the grief for is, you know, you basically see all these, when you say they were apartments, it's terrible. I know, I know you don't think so, but somebody, everybody who doesn't build one does, so, uh...
That's why we asked them to go with townhouses, cause we knew apartments was not gonna make a free and planning commission, so I think they did a good job with the way they, they did me what Seajus and I asked them to do with this new version of ten B.
That we can just hide everything with trees and trees and stuff, bring it in check.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll try to... It still came down a couple of times, we met with me and Jerry, uh, which is why you see so many plans, uh, because between the email and, uh, those discussions, uh...
That, by the way, the greenway looks good with the number of trees and stuff. I was there today. I went down and went through all this, and went down the greenway. Now, hope that they live.
Well, I just found the ones in the brown, couple of new buds coming out, it's maybe real good.
A, a bunch of water bags would be great.
We've got some even, we've got a hundred feet in the water, we've got some more coming.
Okay, but that's what I saw, if you, or the, every day spraying them in a water bag would make a...
It's a little bit, we should finish tomorrow on the, the very back.
Okay.
Yeah, we haven't got water, and I thought we were gonna, yeah. I walked into and I was, somebody, somebody was fixing it, they went in there, they went in there. The rest of my six, it's got trees. I didn't know I was gonna say this part, I was gonna do, 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 do.
All right, guys, let's go. Number seven, please. Any further discussion? If not, can I have a motion on number seven, please?
Oh, come on, please. Motion will approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh...
Any opposed? Okay. Number seven is approved. Number eight, which we've also kind of talked about already.
They voted on the last one. Is that what you asked?
Martha, did they know, I can, um...
They did, they said, they said yay.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, number eight. Any further discussion needed on number eight?
I'm afraid to ask anything.
Not afraid to say anything.
Oh, you oughta be.
You sure, you sure.
About now, you say.
I'm not sure I'm in the same meeting you all are, maybe I'm in another meeting.
We don't have a new drawing or anything, do we?
Yeah.
This is real.
We decided this was ten A, is that correct?
Yep.
Ten A.
Commercial, commercial only.
Yep.
Ten A. Ten A, any questions about ten A? I'm sorry, about number eight?
Grief. You need to eat, don't you? Yeah, done motion.